Where's Commissioner Suarez?
He's in the back.
Chief. Okay, are we in the air?
Yes, sir.
Welcome to the City of West Miami. Today is our regular commission meeting of Wednesday, November the 7th, 2018, at 7:30. For the invocation, who do we have for the invocation? Chief? Please rise.
We thank you, dear God in heaven, for allowing us to gather here tonight. Thank you for your countless blessings and mercy. Guide our city leaders in making the best decisions and help them to choose wisely. We thank you for your abundant love and guidance. We also pray for our newly-elected government leaders so that they too may strive to make the right and proper decisions for the betterment of our country. Bless and protect our law enforcement officers, firefighters, and military personnel who keep us safe from harm and safeguard us constantly. Never allow us to become separated from you, both individually and as a country. We pray in your most holy name as together we say, "Amen."
Amen. Chief, if you want to stay standing for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Roll call, Mayor Eduardo de Mujia.
Present.
Vice Mayor Ronde Rodriguez.
Present.
Commissioner Candida Blanca.
Yes.
Commissioner Juan Blanes.
Present.
Commissioner Luciano Suarez. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Item four.
Item four, presentation of minutes for approval for October 17th, 2018, regular commission meeting.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Madam Clerk, before we continue, do we need to take any item out of order or shall we follow the order of the agenda?
Order of the agenda is fine.
Okay. Next item.
Item five, report of the city manager.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. I submitted a written report. There are a couple of items that I'd like to read into the record. Number one being, it is with distinct honor that I would recommend our police department administration and rank and file for being listed as one of the 10 safest cities in Florida. As you know, there are 412 cities and 67 counties with law enforcement departments in the state of Florida. To be in the top 10 is an honor, but to further make that you proud, there is only two cities in Miami-Dade County at the top 10 list. The other one is the island, Village of Key Biscayne. Knowing that we are surrounded by three other jurisdictions and that the crime has no lines, it is truly the work of the West Miami Police Department and the reputation that exists in the minds of criminals that they do not enter our city. The other cities in the top 10 have budgets for their police departments that provide their men and women with the latest buildings, equipment, and technology. I believe that we can always strive to do better and just think what would happen if we joined the 21st century with, for this department.
Excellent.
I believe.
Congratulations. Congratulations to the police department. And we have the chief coming. Say your words, Ray.
Thank you. I mentioned it in the email, excuse me, when I sent it out to everyone. Myself, deputy chief, and the captain, we run the administration, but it's the men and women that are out there every day that more than, much more than us deserve the praise and the honor for this because we try to provide them the tools and the guidance, but it's them that put the countless hours on the street out there keeping everyone safe.
Also.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question?
Yes.
Have we put this on Facebook and our social media outlets to be sure the residents are made aware of this?
I'll talk to Mr. Q. I'm not sure, but I will make sure that it gets done.
I mean, because I'm sure, you know, we don't have a lot of viewers. I wish we did, but I'm sure the entire city doesn't watch, so we have a lot of people who go to social media, so I would very much like our residents to know this fantastic news.
I will make sure it gets done.
Good, thank you.
Can anybody tell you where it was? No.
It was published in a report. Also, I believe that the chief and us, we come up with some symbolic gesture for the whole department and probably either design a patch for this year for that purpose or design, I don't know, coats, something that they need in their daily work that they could be awarded as recognition for their hard work.
I like that.
Excellent idea. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to say something. Recognize the chief and the deputy chief and the captain and all the members of the City of West Miami Police Department because they are out there, day in and day out, doing an incredibly terrific job. The morale is outstanding in the police department. The interaction with the residents is, it's really, truly great at this time. And, you know, that is a reflection of the leadership that the police department has. The police chief, Nelson Andre, our deputy chief, Carlos Avila, and our captain, Pete Delgado, you know, make an outstanding team and their leadership, it's just, you know, something that we longed for, for many years, and now that we have it, you know, things are, things are great in the City of West Miami Police Department. So, I want to thank you, chief, deputy chief, and Pete, wherever he is. I want to thank him too, and all the men and women of the police department.
Amen. Amen. Dito. Excellent. Okay.
The other item that I wish to report on is the item that's on your agenda as an item, old business, which is the FEMA claim. As I informed at the last meeting, I have received two emails from Theodore Orando from FEMA, and I have stressed our need to resolve the claims from Hurricane Irma. He has advised that the review process of all of our pending claims and paperwork is going well, and we should be sent paperwork for the obligation soon. We do have a couple of smaller part claims that we have asked, have elected to have FEMA complete the paperwork for the mitigation process for the damages. I have sent them an email this morning requesting an update, so I'm sure by tomorrow he will respond to our latest request. But he gets an email from me every week advising him that we need to bring this to a close. Also, on the signage on 62nd Avenue, this, last week I reported we were about to install eight. We couldn't because of our personnel. Again, we had one that had a cold, and it progressively got worse, and then he gave it to his helper, which ended up with him in the hospital too. So, they're back now, and we should be able to complete this within the next two weeks. The only other thing is at Cooper Park, we have the, on the last part of the 2016 FREDUP grant being done now, which is the repaving, repairing and repaving of the asphalt trail and the installation of additional picnic tables, which should be finished by the end of this month.
Okay. Next item?
Next item. Item six, report of the city attorney.
There's no report by the city attorney.
Thank you. Next item?
Item seven, report for the city engineers.
No report.
Thank you. Next item?
Item eight, committee report.
I do, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so do I. But go ahead.
Thank you. There are two things going on with the schools that I'd like to bring to your attention. In fact, tomorrow, our very own captain, Delgado, will be at an event called Books for Breakfast, Somerset Academy. Every quarter, I would say, they have the children come in early to promote literacy, and they literally have books read to them by members of the community. So, in honor of Veterans Day, Pete has graciously volunteered to be there tomorrow at 7:30 a.m. in his tactical gear, he tells me, to represent veterans and read a book to the children and answer questions about Veterans Day. So, I'm very excited. He sounds, he's excited, so I'm sure he'll have a great time. I've gone, I believe, twice, and I've had an excellent time each time I go. And also, we will be having, I believe I reported this to you, Savannah Heights and Somerset will be coming to entertain our seniors for their Thanksgiving luncheon. They will be there to sing songs and provide entertainment for them in the day of, the morning of their luncheon. They're very excited to come. That's it for my reports.
Okay. I do have a report, and then I want the chief also to follow on that. Last Thursday, November the 1st, we had an incident in the City of West Miami where actually a crane in a site that was under construction touched the electrical wires, and I would like for the chief to report on that, and then I want to add something after.
Thank you. It was an unfortunate accident. Apparently, it appears to be operator error. He didn't realize that the chains were hanging below the boom, and as he's getting ready to shut down for the night, he swings the boom, and those chains hit the power cables that go across Southwest 8th Street. It could have been disastrous. He panicked and got out, which is something he shouldn't do because where he's sitting is insulated. That's something that happened, so they protect him for that. And also, when the chain hit the power cord, it became welded, the heat welded it. It could very well have cut it and caused it to fall onto the traffic. That fortunately didn't happen either. We had to call in, actually Deputy Chief Avila got here before me, and he called in some reserve officers that came, responded immediately from their home to help with traffic. We've ordered a traffic vest for the mayor and a flashlight, because he almost got run over directing traffic, so that's coming, Mr. Mayor. But it worked out, the coordination with the fire department, the City of Miami Fire Department is the one that responded, FPNL. Once the incident was over and we were just in the mode to get the street cleared and get the power returned to the residents, everything worked smoothly. It's as though it would have been rehearsed many times over, and again, it's just another sign of preparing. You don't know what's going to expect, but you have to prepare for all these emergencies, and fortunately, it worked out very well.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
What I want to say is, on my report, is I want to thank the many people that collaborated. It's funny that the chief mentioned about directing traffic. Well, this happened at a time where it was critical. I believe there was a shift of.
Peak traffic.
Yeah. We're talking about 6 o'clock in the afternoon, so the traffic was horrendous, and as you know, redirecting traffic by closing H Street was not easy. I mean, traffic was going through. And I want to thank, you know, the police department. I also want to thank the police department of City of Miami that participated as well, the fire department, every single one that participated. And very, very special thanks to Michael Smart that was out there directing traffic. And I think we need to come up with something to thank him because he did an outstanding job. Also, our public works department were out there moving barricades, you name it. I mean, it was, it was really outstanding. So, we met over there with many people. You know, our city manager was there as well. Again, it was, everything actually turned out excellent, and everybody coordinated very well in a situation that at the beginning was chaotic from a traffic point of view.
And just to add to that, Mayor, also, for the record, the principal of the company was there on site.
That's correct. I'm sorry about that.
And he was taking responsibility for everything that occurred.
Yes. That's correct. Robert Suri was there with his staff, taking charge and really helping out with the situation. Commissioner Blané was there, and I'm sure I'm going to forget some people, but there was, a lot of people participated to help directing traffic.
Also, code enforcement officer.
What was that again?
Our code enforcement officer was there.
That is correct. Mr. Martin was there. So, I wasn't prepared to give this a long report, so.
All hands on deck.
All hands on deck. So, once again, thank you for everybody that participated. I understand also our, what's Frank's title?
Which Frank?
This Frank.
Our building official?
Well, what do you think? He would, they call him. He wasn't present, but of course.
He was on a telephone conversation.
Yes. So, a lot of people participated in this. So, nevertheless, thank you, and job well done.
Excellent.
Thank you very much.
Also, before you get out of committee reports, one other item that I wanted to report that I've over, went over was the, our recreation center, flag football team has made the playoffs.
Wow.
There is a schedule. I have it, Carrie sent you an email copy of it for their playoff schedule, and you could attend. They actually went undefeated.
Fantastic.
I got something very brief. The Halloween costume contest went well, but it's becoming increasingly hard to judge because, you know, you have all these young, smiling faces, you know, looking at you and, and, you know, they're all, you want to make them all winners, but you can't, and it's becoming increasingly hard to judge, so. So, next time, Commissioner Rodriguez said that she would do it by herself.
I absolutely did not.
I second that.
No, 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 no. Together, together.
Okay.
But yes, I do agree with you.
Anything, yeah, I don't want to be in your shoes. Anything else on committee report?
No, sir.
Okay, next item?
Mr. Mayor, if you allow me, I have a report to submit about the results of the elections that took place yesterday.
Very important, yes.
Yes, it is my duty to report that on November 6th, 2018, the general election took place conducted by the Miami-Dade County Elections Department. The results are unofficial until certified by the canvassing board. Two charter amendments were proposed to the voters of the City of West Miami, and the results were as follows. The charter amendment number one proposal, it was, it voted, I mean, 1,031 voters voted yes and 1,128 voted no, so it did not pass. That amendment was to limit the expenses of commissioners. Charter amendment number two was establishing the duties of the mayor. 1,436 voters voted yes and 693 voted no, so that amendment passed. Those, these results are unofficial until Friday, where, as I said before, the Elections Department certifies the elections, so the official results will be reported to you as soon as those are received by my office. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Next item? Item nine?
Next item is nine, citizen presentations. No presentations, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Under unfinished business. Item 10 is the follow-up report by the office of the acting city manager in reference to the status of FEMA reimbursement, which was addressed at the manager's report. So, for new business, item 11. Item 11A, this is a second reading, this is a public hearing that was advertised on a newspaper of general circulation following statutory requirements. And it's an ordinance of the mayor on city commission of the City of West Miami establishing a time limitation of blank days from the date building permits are issued by city officials for any building or structure for which permits are required by existing ordinances. Such permits shall lapse and be null and void if work is not completed within said period, requiring that a new application for permit be required on lapsed permits, authorizing the city administration to establish a renewal procedure for expired permits, providing for conflicting ordinances, providing for separability, and providing for an effective date by mayor and city commission. This is phase three of the ordinance, which means this is the second reading and the public hearing.
Okay.
Stage three.
Yes.
So.
And, Mr. Mayor, if you allow me, we conducted a little survey with other municipalities on this item, and most of the municipalities, except Miami Shores, allowed, I mean, they go by the Florida Building Code, which is 120 days or six months.
180 days.
And 80 days, which is six months, and only Miami Shores allows a year. And we've, I mean, surveyed, we have reports from Cutler Bay, Dorale, Hialeah Gardens, Homestead, and Miami Shores, and Sunny Isles Beach, too.
The majority of cities go with the 180 days. It's in chapter, Florida Building Code, sixth edition, chapter 1A, and that is the 180-day stipulation. That's what we've been using up to now in the building department because that's what we adopted when we went from Miami-Dade County to our building department.
Okay. What I want to do is, I want to open, unless you have any further explanation?
That's it.
I want to open the public hearing, then come back to the table for discussion and motion. So, at this time, I would like to open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. Anybody wants to speak on the subject? Okay? Going once, going twice? Okay, nobody wants to speak? So, closing the public hearing, back to the table for discussion. Any comments? Any suggestions? Any agreement?
Just a refresher. So, Mr. Penna, we, we do abide by the six months now. We just don't have it written?
That's correct.
Okay.
When we adopted the Miami-Dade County fee schedule, we adopted their procedures. However, we really don't have an ordinance to justify the 180 days, even though it's in the Florida Building Code.
So, this is not changing how we are currently doing business? We're simply putting in writing for enforcement purposes?
Correct.
And Commissioner, by the way, your face, Commissioner Blané, your face one, face two, face three? Wonderful. It is so much easier to understand now.
Well, since, since.
No, I love it.
Since we first bring it up and not do anything.
I love it. I love it. It's so easily, like, okay.
So, this is stage three.
Great job.
I want to hear from the building office.
I think she summed it up perfectly.
Okay. Beautiful. All right. Well, so, no further question, no further. So, I need a motion for approval then?
Motion.
Motion to insert the 180 days.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
The six months, yes.
Motion.
Second.
Okay. Can you call the vote?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Commissioner Blané, say your vote.
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mayor Mujia?
Yes.
Five zero, item five.
Yeah, it was read to the record. Yes. Item 11.
11B.
B.
Item 11B, this is a second reading, a public hearing. It was advertised on a newspaper of general circulation. This is an ordinance of the mayor on the city commission of the City of West Miami setting forth a time limitation for approved special use permit for planned development site plans that have not presented a building permit application for construction of property within blank months of approval of original site plan by the city commission, providing for conflicting ordinances, providing for separability, and providing for an effective date. Mayor and city commission, phase three, stage three, second reading, public hearing.
May I address?
Yes.
If you follow the heading in line 123, it says for approved special use permit, you should read development for planned development site plan that have been not presented.
Were you referring to what, the resolution, Mr. Penn?
The new ordinance that we're going to, in the heading.
Okay.
It says approved special use permit. We want to take the word permit out of the heading.
And put development.
And use development.
I see, okay.
Did it read like special use?
For planned development.
For planned development.
So, you're simply eliminating the word permit?
That's correct.
Okay.
Reason being, I mean, clarify this, but I'll clarify if I'm doing it wrong. You know how we got confused during the process? We called both permits, so by taking the permit word out of this one, this is the first step. So, that's why we, so, because people get confused. Oh, I already got a permit. No, you didn't get a permit. You got planned development approval, you got site plan approval, which is typically what those cities do.
Makes sense.
Okay? Okay, so, any, any comments before I open the public hearing? Yes.
We're talking about the previous, right? What we approved before, right?
Yes. What's before you tonight? No, no, the one that, the second one that's before you tonight, the second ordinance. We already approved the first ordinance. That's for the building permit. What we want to eliminate out of the special use planned development is the word permit, which is the second ordinance.
Okay, that's the 180 days.
No, no.
No, that was the building permit.
The first one we approved, 180 days.
Yes, sir.
Now, we are talking about months.
We're talking about the planned development ordinance.
Okay. Again, open the public hearing. Nobody speaking on the subjects, so closing the public hearing. Back to the table.
Mr. Mayor, if you allow, we conducted a survey of different cities and what they use for their special plan developments, and from Coral Gables to Surfside, the average was anywhere from 18 months to two years, and that is what we're recommending. We're recommending to go with either the 18 months or the two years with an additional year if they, if they want an extension to the expiration.
Okay.
What would cause, what would cause us to give them an extra year?
If there, if there's any type of development in the process of either securing land, other land permits that they need, reviewed by Florida Department of Transportation, Miami-Dade County, those agencies do take their time in processing permits for development.
So, we're allowing, then, with that additional year, like, three years, right?
If we allow it, it would have to come back to us for the third year.
Okay.
It has to be requested. It's not, it's not given.
It's not automatic.
So, how many months do we agree on?
Anywhere from 18 to 24 is the average that we saw with the other cities.
I would say 18.
About 18 with a six-month extension.
That's up to you.
What are, what are we doing right now?
Right now, we have no time limit.
It's unlimited.
It's unlimited, okay.
And basically, someone can sit for years and not do anything.
Now, my question is.
So, this is one way of protecting the city.
My question is, Mayor, is this, we took about 18 months plus six-month extension if it's necessary?
No, a year.
Or maybe 24 months?
No, a year's extension.
One-year extension.
That's, well, that was what Mr. Penna mentioned.
Correct.
Your comment is 18 months plus one-year extension if it's necessary.
Only after, after they come and apply for the extension.
And all those problems.
Right.
Does it necessarily have to be an extra year or maybe just six months, four months?
That's up to you, sir.
Because maybe what they, can we make?
Why don't you use the word up to a year?
There we go, up to a year. Because if it's something that.
Up to a year and the extension.
Up to a year and the extension. Up to a year on the extension, because if something that maybe requires just a couple of months, and we have to give them a year, then, you know, they can.
You can use the word up to at the discretion of the city manager.
Okay, let me, let me add a couple of things, as, as you know, besides being the mayor, I'm an architect, so, I'm in the business, one of the things that happened is, you know, Surfside and Coral Gables are not comparable as far as cities, also, the process of doing a set of drawings for a two-story home is not as long, I mean, as a process for an A-story building, okay, so, just doing the design, doing the set of drawings, and permitting those drawings, trust me, it takes more than a year, so, my suggestion is to go with the two years, and as, as our city attorney mentions, the extension up to a year, because that way, it gives it to, you know, it gives the building department something to judge it and kind of negotiate, be able to negotiate rather than, okay, because what happened is, believe me, the process take long, I'll give you an example, something as simple as a restaurant, that I did in a particular city, which I'm not going to mention, when I went to Dade County for, to get a permit for derm for a grease trap, just that permit took six months, okay, so, things happen, things take time, and, so we need to live in play. The other thing is, when that survey was conducted, with, you know, I'm sorry, with all due respect, whoever conducted the survey, when you ask the question, they tell you the sure answer, but if you read the ordinance from other municipalities, they have language in there that you can actually get an extension, so, in addition to the eighteen month and the two year, you can actually get an extension, and that's, you know, if you go to Miami 21, which is the city of Miami, it tells you that, every ordinance it gives you, so, we're in line with the rest by, I believe we should go with the two years and the extension up to, up to a year, so that way, if, if, you know, when they sit down with the building department, they say, hey, all you need is what, three more months, you know, it's only three more months, not a year, so, I mean, that's my suggestion, again, you know, it has to be, and the only reason I say that is, is because I know how long this process actually takes, by the same token, I sit over here as a mayor, I see why we're doing this, because of previous experience that we have, and moving forward, we wanted to make sure that, you know, properties don't, you know, get approval and be left abandoned and being notions and et cetera, so I understand the, and that's, like I said, going forward, so.
I, I have a comment, so, he is recommending eighteen months plus up to one year, you talking about?
No, no, he's not finished.
No, I mean, Mr. Penn, I recommend eighteen months plus up to one year, and you're talking about twenty-four months plus up to one year.
That's good.
And I agree with the mayor, because today, the derm, all those new departments, the trees, if you're going to a piece of land, and there used to be some kind of trees, and then they want to know what trees were there, and they tell you what trees you have to do, and they, they ask you, making a study with arborist.
Yes.
They drive you crazy, drive you crazy, the county with these things, tell you.
Mr. Mayor, I agree, I agree with you, and I agree with Commissioner Suarez, and alluding to what you just said, you know, I'm gonna play the devil's advocate here, let's just say that it takes them two years, and they still haven't quite gotten everything they need to start, and let's say that we give them an extension up to a year, and let's just say that for some reason, Dade County, derm, or the arborist, I don't know, you know, drops the ball, and they still don't get what they need, now, if that period of time, that year that we give them extra, if, if that passes, then according to our law, right, Mr. Attorney, then they have to.
Come back to us?
Come back.
Of course.
And start doing everything, that means that they would have to pay, you know, the fees and do everything, right?
Yes.
Now, do we want to do that to someone that is acting in good faith, and wants to develop something here in the city? You follow what I'm getting to?
I think we can, we can put some language in there.
I don't think that would be fair, I think that, isn't there something that we can put into the law where if, if there's a transition, or there's something that's happening, and for some reason that it's, that is readily self-evident, that they have not been able to obtain, and that it's just gonna take a little bit more time, then maybe we can allow them to have a little bit more time, but then that would be more than up to a year, how can we word that to, to, according to the, maybe the mayor and the commission's discretion, or maybe just the city manager, we can give them that, maybe, maybe they need an extra month, maybe they need an extra week, but if it passes that up to a year, then they gotta start all over again, I'm.
That's one of the best questions, I'm sorry.
Yes, go ahead.
I mean, I brought this whole thing up, because I want to protect the city.
But, but you got a good point.
But then again, because, because of what you alluded to, and, and, you know, when you have someone that is willing to invest all this money, and is acting in good faith, and they just not been able to obtain what they need to start, then we gotta have some kind of leeway, we gotta help them.
May I, may I, may, Commissioner Blanis, let me tell you, if a developer, anyone who wants to do something in the city, come with good faith, their business is to finish as soon as possible, but that's their way, now, let me finish, if one, if somebody comes, and in the twenty-four months, don't do anything, even they have the option to one extra year, they have to come to us for, ask for that, if we see there is no reason, we may say no, because it's been eighteen months, twenty-four months, and you do nothing, you do not demonstrate us a good faith, so if they do not demonstrate a good faith, we have the right to say, we give it the extension, or we don't, we allow or not, something at the table.
But I'm talking about someone, I'm talking about someone that is, that is, you know, doing everything, is in the process of, and for some reason, like you said, the arborist hasn't given them the okay, and, you know, they haven't figured out what kind of trees.
If it's somebody with good faith, he talked to the commission, and the commission, talk to them, they negotiate.
So we can't make the law up to a year, we gotta rewrite it to where it's, it's more than up to a year.
That's what the lawyer is telling you.
Can I, can I, Mr. Attorney, don't you have, you mentioned something, that you have some language in there that?
Yes, we have some language that.
That you wanted to include.
The mayor and I and the manager discussed earlier, which is actually not reinventing the wheel, but something that came out from Miami 21, which was really fantastic, this actually is a waiver that allows to, on extraordinary circumstances, to valid for up to two years, and in which the building permit certificate must be obtained, in other words, after that period of time, there's another waiver, and it says, a one-year time extension for a period not to exceed an additional year, may be obtained upon application and approval by the zoning administrator, now, and I would recommend also some language to the effect that would carry out the concern of Commissioner Suarez, and your concern as well, sir, that it says, in extraordinary circumstances, the applicant made by proper challenged request from the city administration for a granted waiver to extend the time in which to complete it.
Also, just to add to that, when you said about, when you asked if they would have to pay the fees, again, our fees are very minimal as far as for special use plan developments, and I would suggest that you leave it, because that way it allows us money for the advertising that goes out to the, to the residential area, so they know what's going on with the project, so I wouldn't want to eliminate that, and then us bear the cost of advertising, that's why the fee has to stay in there.
I didn't say anything about eliminating any fees.
No, no, but you said about paying additional fees after.
Well, can I clarify something, because I think it's a matter of the way we presenting this, and, okay, this is the way I interpret it, and the way I interpret it from you, Commissioner Blanis and Commissioner Suarez, okay, think about, because I'm a visual person, and when I tell you this, you're gonna understand, you know, when we have a mitigation, and they come before us to present the case, I think that's what Commissioner Suarez is mentioning, what Commissioner Blanis is mentioning is, I believe he's in agreement with that, what he is saying is not to go through the whole process of planning development that where you have to present to the planning and zoning board, and then come to the commission with the boards and the hearing and all that, that's what you're saying, that's what you're saying, if they have a legitimate, legitimate, they asking for a time extension because they have a legitimate case, because somebody else is holding the process.
Right.
Okay, so.
Right.
If we can put some language in there, so we can talk about this all night.
But again, in that case, you would still want them to present whatever the, the, the op, the, the barricade to, to, the obstacle to their obtaining the, the approval from other agencies, you would want to present that to this board.
Oh, yeah, they would have to have a burden, you know, they would have to say, look, this is, this is our situation, we're trying our best, and we're just being held up by, by this, and we have to wait, in other words.
But we would want it in actual documents, just like we do the other presentations, in other words, so the record is always kept.
Right.
Of why it happened.
If you approve the concept, just go ahead and write the language.
Okay.
As I understand it, is that you will grant within eighteen months?
No, twenty-four.
Two years.
Twenty-four months.
With an extension of one year.
Up to.
Up to one year.
And then the possibility.
In the extraordinary circumstances.
Yes.
Extraordinary.
You would grant the manager the ability to grant an additional time in which to complete it, and if the manager denies it, then they can come out to the commission to request the approval that the manager denied.
Good enough.
About that. I, I, okay, I, I think it should not be the manager, I think it should be somebody in the building department that understands the process, don't you think?
Right.
But again, I'll ask the.
Management.
Again, we'll word it like everything else in our charter.
Yes.
The manager or his designated.
Okay, okay.
Let me just clarify something, because we were saying, I believe, to bring it back here, now, the manager is saying it doesn't come back here unless the manager denies, management denies the extension, so, where is it ending?
If they, if they're not acting.
Why, I guess my question is, why should it come back here?
If they're not acting in good faith, and, you know, they don't present something to the manager.
A valid cause.
Right, but why to us, why doesn't it just go to?
Because you always have to have an appeal process to the manager.
Right, just for the appeal, not for the request for extension, that shouldn't come to us.
Correct.
The request for extension should stay with administration.
That's correct.
Correct.
Are we, are we in agreement with that?
Yes.
That's what is being written.
Yes.
Only if they want to appeal.
A denial.
Then it comes to us.
If they don't, if they don't show an extraordinary circumstance.
But that goes there.
And the manager says, you know what, you're pulling our legs, you know, you're, you've been, you know, you, it's not good enough, in other words, you've not, you're, you're not acting in good faith.
They have the right to appeal.
Then they come to us.
So then we give them the right.
But they initially go to the administration for the request for the extension.
That is correct.
Okay, I'm good.
And then, and then it'll be up to us to see what's going on.
I'm good, okay.
Correct, but that appeal process to you will have to pay the fees again.
Oh, everything, all over.
Right, right, I just want to be sure it wasn't coming to us for the extension, it was going to administration for the extension.
The whole process starts all over again.
Fine, I'm good, I'm good.
Okay, so we're all good?
Mm-hmm.
I need a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Well, what, let's, let's read what the time we were putting in there, what are we, what is the time, the final time?
Twenty-four months.
Twenty-four months.
And up to a year, and then if they're extenuating extraordinary circumstances, up to the city manager to determine to give them extra time.
Deny, they come to us.
And if deny, they start all over again.
Very good.
They come to us.
All right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Not start all over again, I'm sorry.
Just comes to the city.
Just come out to the commission for approval.
But they have to pay the fees.
Correct.
So.
For proper advertising.
Wouldn't that be, oh, for, for the advert, okay.
They'll, they'll take, they'll take the proper, okay, all right, we have a motion, we have a second, can you call the vote, please?
Yes, Commissioner Suarez, have you voted?
Yes, yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanis?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mayor Mojina?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Next item, item C.
Item C, this is a resolution of the mayor and city commission of the city of West Miami, authorizing the city manager to execute an interlocal agreement between the city of West Miami and the office of the state attorney for the prosecution of ordinance violations for the period October 1st, 2018 through September 30th, 2019, providing for effective date, providing for transmittal, mayor and city commission.
Mr. Mayor, this is done every year, it is a requirement of chapter five, last year, we had one case prosecuted through the state attorney's office at a cost of sixteen dollars and sixty-seven cents.
Okay.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, call the vote.
Commissioner Blanis, have you voted?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mayor Mojina?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Thank you.
Item eleven D, resolution of the mayor and city commission of the city of West Miami, authorizing the acting city manager to enter into an agreement with Universal Comsets for a cap of thirty thousand dollars for the purchase of new light panels for the holiday tree at the West Miami Recreation Center, to be funded from restrictive reserves Recreation Enterprise Fund, providing for effective date, mayor and city commission.
Basically, Mr. Mayor and commissioners, we inherited the, the old tree from the city of Coral Gables over ten years ago, when they bought their new one, they gave us the old one, and we've been using it now for ten years, they used it for twenty years, the frame is in good shape, and we're basically going back to the original manufacturer, which is still in business, and we want to purchase new panels for, lighting panels for the, for the tree, for the holiday tree, in order to upgrade it, safety-wise, the wiring on this is very old, the panels go in and out, they short-circuit, they could be a liability, and we have the funds in the recreation reserve account, and we would like to purchase new panels for it.
Now, the reason that this is not going to actual bid is that this is, since we have an emergency, because it does pose a danger to not only employees, but also to the citizens, that would be a waiver of public solicitation, but it's necessary because the Christmas trees is gonna be around the corner, and there's simply no time, and we have an electric problem that could cause very serious injury to, to kids and employees.
Not just that, but it's the same company that manufactured the tree initially.
Correct.
So they would have the special molds or the special type of.
They have all the specifications.
Actually, it's a single source also, so, yeah, that's in addition to, okay.
I have two questions.
Yes.
Yes.
This basically means we're getting a brand-new tree.
It's kept to its steel frame, yes.
Because we're only keeping the metal frame.
The steel frame.
So it's a new tree, number one, number two, will we have it by Christmas, lighting of a tree this year?
I believe so.
Number three, does this mean when we do our countdown, our tree will light on time?
That's, that's the idea.
We won't have, we won't have to do any redos?
We may not have to do redos.
Or is it, or is it the fault of the operator, that's, is it the tree lighting?
It's a tree lighting.
Or is it the fault of the person flipping the switch?
No, it's a tree lighting.
All right, so, which means we'll have a, an accurate countdown this year?
Yes.
Okay, I'm hoping you do that.
Yes.
Maybe, maybe we have a problem that year because of that.
No, no.
Well, I'm joking, but yes, I agree.
And now I have a question. These funds for the Recreation Enterprises, this money is exclusive to be used in these things.
Yes, sir.
Right? I make a motion.
I second.
Okay, I call the vote.
Yes, Commissioner Blanis, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rodriguez?
I'm sorry, I'm a little confused. This is the, this is the paper that you gave us, is the actual resolution?
Yes. It's been modified several times.
But when we read it into record, I thought we said we weren't using impact fees.
No, we're not.
And this says it is impact fees, so...
No, that, that will be changed.
That changed.
No, 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 when it was read into the record, it said...
Recreation Reserve.
Right, but this resolution actually says park impact fees, so...
Yes, well, was read into the record, it's a correct fund.
That's the one we will be using, not this one that was given.
That's just the body of the, of the resolution.
Okay.
It's a different...
Yes.
Okay. With that, yes.
And Mayor Mujina?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Thank you. Next item?
Next item, item 11E, this is a resolution of the mayor and city commission of the city of West Miami authorizing the acting city manager to enter into an agreement with Park and Field Renovations, Inc., for the amount of $42,150.00 in connection with the leveling of the outfield for the senior baseball field and minor renovations at the West Miami Recreation Center, providing for funding for, from FERDAP grant fund 2017-18, providing for effective date, mayor and city commission.
Again, Mr. Mayor, we were funded a FERDAP grant under the Land and Conservation Act and it was for 104,000 from the city and 104,000 from the Land and Conservation Trust. Part of that work is the leveling of the outfield. We previously went ahead a couple of years ago and we leveled the infield of both fields. Now, we've gotten funding to level the outfield and that'll take all these humps and bumps that we have out there. It'll be all stripped of the grass and then new sod will be planted once it's all leveled out. Adjusted with sprinklers, everything else gets modified in order to have a level playing field.
Now, again, the administration has found that the diligent search to the Park and Field Renovation, Inc. is the only source available for this work, so this will be a sole source issue as well.
Is this the same company that did the infield, Mr. Penna?
Yes.
So this is really just a continuation of the grant and the work that was started a while back?
It's our, our continuation of having a nice playing field for the kids at the recreation center.
But it's the same grant that we use portion of...
No, it's two different grants. The first one was for leveling the infield, now the second one is for leveling the outfield.
Okay.
It's gonna be nice and safe.
Motion.
Second.
Call the vote.
Yes, Commissioner Blanis, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mayor Mujina?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Thank you.
Item 11F, this is a resolution of the mayor and city commission of the city of West Miami authorizing the acting city manager the expenditure of $82,200 for services in connection with professional engineering services for planning, design, and permitting for the Recreation Center Fitness Room Project payable to Tewailin International, providing for effective date, mayor and city commission.
Thank you.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, resolution F and resolution G, we would like to table for future meeting. There are technical issues that are still have to be discussed and we'll bring it back at that time.
Okay.
All right.
So it's being deferred?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you.
If you could motion it to defer.
I need a motion to defer item F and G.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, call the vote.
Okay, the motion was by Commissioner Blanca or by Vice Mayor Rodriguez?
Blanca, Blanca may take it.
Commissioner Blanca made the motion, Commissioner Rodriguez seconded the motion.
Okay, Commissioner Blanis, how do you vote on deferring these two items?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mayor Mujina?
Yes.
Five zero, these two items are deferred. Next item is item 11H, this is a discussion and recommendation by Vice Mayor Rodriguez for review and reconsideration of display of merchandise and signage ordinances by the Planning and Zoning Board.
Commissioner, Vice Mayor.
Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor, I apologize.
Oh, I was on I already, okay.
No H.
Yes, thank you, yes. This has been on my mind for, for some time now. Our commercial corridor with our new development, it's, it's looking very nice and I was hoping more for, for a domino effect and for our other commercial tenants to perhaps beautify or make, or make their, the outside of the business establishment a little bit more pleasing to the eye. And what concerns me is display of outside merchandise. I really don't think that's in line with how we want our commercial, commercial corridor to look. Signage, there's just an abundance of signage on the storefront windows, the entire window is covered in signage, list every product they sell from, I mean, it's just a list of all the products. So what I would like to do is to send, send this back to our planning and zoning and have them review those two ordinances and kind of tighten them up, make them a little bit more in line with how I believe our city's commercial corridor is, is, is going to look. And then, you know, bring it to us and then we, we see what they think. But I just think it's time where, you know, the time is right to have this reviewed again. We've been a little bit lax, I think, so I'd like to just get their input as to what they think we should do.
I agree.
I'm in agreement, I'm in agreement. So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Thank you.
Motion passes, so this is to take it to the planning...
Take the planning and zoning, yeah.
Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
I have a question. Can you identify what you call commercial corridor?
Our entire commercial corridor. Business, the business in our...
Oh, you're talking about the business area?
Yeah.
It's 57th Avenue, 67th and 8th Street.
The entire commercial corridor, correct. The businesses along our commercial corridor.
I just want to be identified because commercial corridor, maybe somebody watching us do not identify properly.
Oh, sure, yes.
You're just talking about the, the business area. 8th Street, 57th Avenue, 67th Avenue.
Correct, yes, exactly, yes.
Thank you, thank you for the clarification. Okay, next item.
Item, I request by Vice Mayor Rodriguez for proclamation recognizing Cilene High Elementary School and Somerset Academy teachers as part of the Miami Dade County Public School Appreciation Campaign, Respect, Respect Teachers, said new campaign.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And yes, I'd like to read, explain this a little bit more. We received an email from Miami Dade County Public Schools and what they, what they're doing, it's, it is called RESPECT, R-E-S-P-E-C-T, Respect Teachers. RESPECT stands for Recognize, Engage, Support, Persuade, Educate, and Celebrate. So what they're asking is for us to join Miami Dade County Public Schools as we respect teachers. Each month, the school district will highlight the importance of the teaching profession with various themed activities. So I sat with Mr. Penna and we kind of like brainstormed because I really wanted to participate in this campaign. I think it's, I think it's just, our, our teachers deserve so much respect in the, in the general term of respect, but I'd like to, to support Miami Dade County Public Schools in this effort. So what we thought about was perhaps a proclamation to both of our schools to show that we support this campaign in the, in the respect for our teachers. So that's exactly what I'd like to get your buy-in for is for a proclamation to both of our schools for this campaign, to show that we, we do support them.
Excellent idea. Okay, any comments?
Yes.
Yeah, agreed, both the schools are doing a great job.
Perfect, thank you.
They deserve it.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next item?
Yes, and I have a question. When would you like to make this presentation?
It's for, it's a, it's a very long campaign, so I don't really, it says it's an ongoing, they're gonna have various themed activities, so I believe this is going to be a rather long campaign, but I will sit with you, Madam Clerk.
Sure.
And we'll talk about the time and...
We have a couple of meetings, like not too many for the...
Oh, okay.
Left for this year, like November, I mean, December, November 21st, December 5th, because usually we cancel the second meeting of December, so we have to decide between, but we can, obviously...
Let's get together.
We can get together and coordinate.
The wording and when.
Yes, of course.
And then, of course, when I, when I do present this, I, you know, we're all, you're all invited on whatever day we decide to actually present it to the schools, we'll let you know. Okay, yes, Madam Clerk, we'll get together on that one.
Sure.
Now, Mayor?
Yes.
You finished?
Yes, sir.
I want to make a, a request to the clerk and to the manager. Next meeting, please, remind all of us, come, well dressed, to take a picture with the 50 years anniversary of the Ombreul.
Okay.
All right? Please request all...
Duly noted, to come dressed nicely with tie, okay.
Do I have to wear a tie?
No.
No.
No, don't, no.
Okay.
You may use a hat.
Thank you.
Like a British, like an English.
Yes.
And you and the Commissioner Blanca, she have it.
We'll coordinate.
A nice, you know, British, you know...
Commissioner, we'll coordinate.
British design, yeah.
Okay, we're on it.
Well...
Well, no, you have the hat.
No, we'll, we're gonna wear the hat, but we're gonna coordinate the rest of the outfit.
We can continue talking about that good of the order. We still have an item?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, item J. This is a request of proclam, for proclamation recognizing Dr. Onkar Narula by Commissioner Blanis.
Commissioner Blanis.
Were we able to, to obtain a bio?
We will. For the presentation, we will.
Okay, yeah, because I, I failed to provide you all with a, with a bio of this gentleman. He is a physician, a cardiologist, I think he's been, been at it for 50 years, very humble, meek person. This particular doctor, cardiologist, he was the one that came up with perfected and patented the catheters that they use whenever they do a cardiac catheterization, which they either do through the groin or through the wrist. That is his, his invention, his, his design. He's a very wealthy man, he probably doesn't need to, you know, after that, he probably didn't need to work, but he is 80 years old and he continued being a doctor, a cardiologist, and finally, he's retiring. And I've known him for about 10 years, really a, truly a gentleman and he's, you know, he's lectured throughout the world, in India, in Brazil, you know, in, in Russia, he's been all over the world lecturing. He's written books, so I wish that I could have, you know, prepared a bio and maybe even taken pictures of his...
I'm sold already.
Okay, yeah, so, you know, I mean, like I say, he, he is a very wealthy individual and he, he could have retired so many years ago and he hasn't. So, you know, because he loves what he does. He loves helping people, caring people and, and so, you know, someone like that, I, I think that is deserving of having...
I agree.
Of having a recognition.
Agreed.
Would you make a motion for that? I make a motion.
All in, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Good of the order.
Mayor, under good of the order, it was, we noted today that the, our Thanksgiving luncheon is November 21st, because Thanksgiving's early this year and Thanksgiving's on the 22nd. So therefore, since our luncheon is on the 21st, we would like to close City Hall at 2:00 to have our luncheon and also to cancel the meeting of the 21st so that we could enjoy